Okay, recording has started.
Okay, I'll call the North Smithfield School Committee meeting of July 21st, 2020 to order. Clerk, please call a roll.
Chair Lombardi?
Present.
Mrs. Charas. I saw her on here. Mrs. Charas?
I'm here, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Cornell?
Here.
Mrs. Johannes?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Mayo?
Here.
Mrs. Vada?
Here.
We have a quorum. We'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, welcome, everyone. Thank you for attending the meeting. We'll get to the reopening plan in just a minute. We'll just do some housekeeping measures. I'll move to the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda or want anything taken off? I'll entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to the reports. Superintendent, the reopening plan for North Smithfield Schools.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to put out information in as many ways, shapes, and forms as we can. We do have tonight's school committee meeting in which I will be presenting an overview of the plan. This video will be ready for review to watch on YouTube later on tonight. Additionally, I do have a summary letter that's going out to all families and all staff after the school committee meeting. And within that letter, outside of the information on some of our reopening plans and some of the hurdles that we have to jump through, and will be a couple of open forums. So I'm scheduling a staff forum to come forward with their questions, comments, and concerns to have a discussion. The time will be 8:30 Thursday morning. Again, I will also record that for any staff members who can't make it and would like to play it back later. And then also within the letter will be an invitation for a public community forum, which will take place Thursday night at 6:30. And again, in the summary letter that I send out, the link and the phone number will be there along with a short survey. Just requesting, anybody, just put in your questions and concerns. I know we have, we sent out a parent survey and we gathered a lot of good information and comments and questions from the community, from the parents, but this will give you an opportunity to queue up some specific questions you may have on this reopening plan. So what I'm going to do, I put together a couple of slides that I'm going to reference. So I'm going to switch over to the slide deck at any point. School committee, if you have any comments or questions, if you want to ask, I'll kick over to, back to the video and we can discuss, or you can ask your questions, and then I'll go back into the slide deck. All right, so just a couple of little housekeeping things at the beginning. And one, I truly want to thank our principals and assistant principals and Assistant Superintendent Claire Arnold for the work that they did on the various reopening committees to go through the Rhode Island Department of Ed guidance and try to break it down and come up with solutions and answers for each of their questions. So they led committees. We had probably about 30 or 40 volunteers, all pooling our resources and expertise and honestly trying to come up with something that would be workable based on the Department of Ed guidance. Now, I also have a couple of disclaimers. One, we did submit three different plans, but those plans were highly prescribed by the Department of Ed. They were given, we were given specific scenarios in which we had to come up with specific answers. Now, during the whole process, as we're trying to come up with solutions, we also came up with many more questions. Many of these questions, we don't have the answer to. Many of these questions are also tied to, we don't know what August is going to look like. We don't know the state of the pandemic. We don't know how Rhode Island is going to be fair. And we don't know, in fact, there's just a lot we don't know. So really, this is sort of best-case scenarios, but ultimately I want to assure everybody this was draft. It's based on guidance we were given. And ultimately, the Department of Health, the Department of Ed, and the Governor's Office will choose amongst our plans, and we anticipate come up with a model for the state. So what we submit here may not be what actually happens. So one of the challenges was to find a balance because we know we want to support our students' instructional and social emotional needs. They, you know, they, our teachers, the kids, and the parents did remarkable during distance learning, and we know how difficult it was. And we are going to, in the plans that we present, try very hard not to return to 100% distance learning. We need the kids in the school. We need, they need to be with their friends. They need to be with their teachers. So we're going to make every effort to bring them into the schools. Additionally, we need to support our families. So last year under distance learning, we structured ourselves to make, to try to compensate and take care of families that were working during the day that maybe couldn't help their child until the evening or the weekend. So we tried to keep things as flexible as possible. We maintained free meal services. So again, you know, the school department is here to ultimately support our community and our families, and that's what we're going to try to do. And additionally, any reopening plan, anything we do, any solutions we provide or anything we recommend has to minimize the risk. We have to keep the health and safety of our students, our teachers, and our families in mind at all times. Now, to be honest, this is a difficult thing to do in the sense that with the spread of the virus, we will inevitably have teachers and staff that need to quarantine. We have many teachers who are in high-risk categories. We have teachers whose families are in high-risk categories. We may at times have difficulties covering classes depending on, you know, the spread of the virus. And again, you know, I'm not commenting that we need to open. I'm just giving you the plans and we're just working out all the possible scenarios, you know, best and worst cases along the way. Social distancing will be difficult to maintain in our classrooms. So originally, the guidance from the Department of Ed and Department of Health was to have six feet of social distancing within the classrooms, just like you get at Stop &amp; Shop or Ace Hardware, six feet distance. So the recommendation was to have our desks six feet apart. However, all of our classrooms, and not just in North Smithfield, but across the state, at a six-feet radius around the desk, we could only fit about 14 desks in the classroom. We typically have anywhere from 22 to 28 students in a classroom. So one of our concerns is that once this information started going back to the Department of Education, realizing that our rooms were pretty much too small to fit all the desks six feet apart, at some point, the guidance changed and three feet apart. Three to six became the recommendation for student desks. So, and again, I'm putting this out there as a concern. We will have difficulty social distancing in the classroom if the guidance remains the same at around six feet or if it changes from three to six. Plus, we are going to have to build in plans and be able to rapidly pivot between in-person learning and distance learning. We will have teachers and students who will be moving back and forth between this continuum. So we have to have something that works for everybody depending on what their educational needs or what their health needs are. And then two other items I'm going to, I've broken down into separate slides. It's regarding facial coverings and transportation, which have also become issues depending on the reopening plans that we're looking at. Now, the Department of Education and the Department of Health put out guidance around facial coverings. And I've highlighted the first couple of sentences. "It is recommended that face coverings be worn by students when possible, even in stable group settings." Now, a stable group setting would be an elementary classroom where the kids stayed with each other all day long. They don't mix and mingle with other classrooms in the school. "Face coverings are recommended, but not required, in settings where people can easily and continuously maintain six feet of distance from other people." "Children must not face a penalty for not wearing face coverings." Now, we get this and we understand. There is a concern around, now, let me just jump forward. For high school, face covering should be worn whenever six feet of physical distance cannot be guaranteed. So that would be passing in the hallways. That would be getting ready for the bus, being, riding the bus, getting dropped off at school, getting ready to be picked up, anywhere that the students will be, you know, crowded together. Now, the concern that has come up with many teachers and many parents, that certainly the parents have expressed this in the parent survey, is this issue around face coverings. From a staff standpoint, the concern is that face coverings aren't mandated. And again, I repeat, we have staff that are in high-risk categories or going home to children who are high-risk. There is no mandatory, facial coverings are not mandatory. So that puts a lot of our teachers are very concerned. Our parent survey also had a number of issues around face coverings. But before I talk about, let me just say something with the parent surveys. So we had about 700, parents of 700 students respond out of our 1,600. And the comments and suggestions they left were fantastic. The individual information for their individual child was wonderful to have and really good knowledge for us going forward. In fact, even with the question on transportation, a lot of the parents said that, you know, I write, you know, my child rides the bus, but I can find another way to get to and from school if it will make space for another family to ride the bus. That may not be as fortunate or may not be able to carpool. So there was a really good community outpouring in the parent letter comments. However, there was a split between the facial coverings. We had a number of parents say that, "I don't wear face coverings and my child doesn't wear a face covering. It makes them uncomfortable," and which, again, is legit, especially depending on the age of the child. And they will not be wearing a face covering. And then we have other parents respond that, you know, unless face coverings are mandatory, I can't, I'm not going to risk sending my child to school. So this isn't just a North Smithfield thing. This is a nationwide debate right now. Is wearing face coverings, to what age do we wear face coverings? Number of parents were concerned that, you know, about sending their child to school when they themselves may have an underlying health condition or were living with a relative, a grandparent in the house who has an underlying health condition. And so returning to school was very frightening thought. Additionally, we also have some families, a number of families that don't have medical insurance. They cannot afford to get COVID. They cannot afford to be hospitalized. And so again, the whole issue of minimizing risk and it comes down to face coverings becomes very divisive. So right now, I'm just saying, here is the guidance that the Department of Ed has put out there. It may change depending on the state of the pandemic.
Superintendent, I have a question.
Yes, please.
You said that's the suggestions that Ride has put out there. Has Ride, like I said, you know, if any school committees, if any people have any feedback, give it back to them? Are they looking for feedback or is it pretty much just top-down, they're telling us what they're doing, that's it?
No, we've actually been giving steady feedback along the way. And again, keep in mind that the guidance, the push to reopen 100% was, the decision was made at the end of last school year after three long months of distance learning, before the summer began with great optimism that everything would be getting back to normal. All right, so remember, so the guidance and these pieces here are coming out as a snapshot in time, and they will be modifying as time goes on. So all I can really do is comment on our plan as of this moment in time with perhaps some speculation as to where we may be in a month from now, along with recommendations to the Governor's Office, the Department of Ed, the Department of Health, that sometimes the guidance and the restrictions don't really square up with how we do business on a daily basis. So for example, like with transportation and with stable groups, the recommendation is that Mrs. Smith has her 22 kids in class with her all day long. They stay with Mrs. Smith. They don't mix with the other kids. So the question is, what happens on the bus when Mrs. Smith's class or mixing, kids are mixing with kids in other classes? The recommendation was that, well, why can't we have the buses picked up by stable group? Which if any of the parents know, you know, we're seeing the kids getting on the bus, if we have buses that are limited to 24 students, we cannot send a bus out just to pick up everybody in Mrs. Smith's class because North Smithfield is long and windy and that bus route will take two hours. And there's more kids to, more kids to transport. So again, there's the recommendation versus the, okay, this is what it's like in the real world. Here are the other considerations. So hopefully, we're getting, we're going to come to a point where everyone is in agreement. The guidance matches with our ability to deliver. So, back to buses. I'm sorry, does anybody have any question regarding the facial coverings? Okay, so with the transportation, the guidance that came with the plan is one student per seat. Members of the same family can double up in seats. They can sit together in the seat. So we have 13 buses. Our buses have 77-seat capacity. They're big buses. With one student per seat, we're limited to 24 students. We have roughly 24 or 25 seats on the bus. Now, with members of the same household sitting in the bus, you know, in seats together, I'm estimating around maybe 30 students per bus, again, under current guidance. So we can transport under this capacity 390 students on a bus run. AM run, PM run, elementary run, secondary run. So elementary has been over 600 students, and they average about 75% ridership, which means 60 students would have to find alternate accommodations. Under the restrictions, we can't, there are 60 students that we won't be able to allow on the bus. Now again, the guidance may change and more students may be allowed on the bus. I can only go from this point in time what the current guidance is. For the high school, middle school, there's more students. Only 55% on average take the bus, and that means 580 students, 583 students, which translates to about 160 students would have to find alternate forms of transportation. There wouldn't be room on the bus. So we do have some transportation issues. Again, this is under full opening. Everyone's coming in and with restrictions on the bus. So the three plans that Ride wanted us to prepare. Full distance, we didn't prepare that, full distance learning, because that's when everything goes sideways, which is back to everyone's sheltered in place back at home. More likely, best-case scenario, we're in this minimum-to-none area. That's full in-person for all. Schools reopen 100% with some social distancing in place, with some distance learning in place. We'll most likely be somewhere in the middle here. Partial in-person learning, which focuses on elementary and transition grades. Now, a transition grade would be ninth grade, for example. So this focus for partial in-person, based on the recommendation, is elementary schools come in, ninth grade comes in. They're looking, and everybody else could quite possibly be distance learning. They're looking also to stagger entry, which means that we, you know, one of the things would be to have a third bus run so that maybe elementary students don't all show up at the same time. You know, there's two different drop-offs and two different pickups of elementary students. Or we start out week number one with grade one and grade three, and then week number two, we add grade two and grade four. That's what they mean by staggered opening. And then there's the limited in-person opening, which again is just prioritizing the elementary, the at-risk students, and then maybe some other transition grade, but the majority of kids are at home. So of the three plans, we have some items that are in common. One, we have to maintain social distancing in face coverings, and I put according to CDC guidance, whatever that guidance will happen to be at that time. We are in the process of reorganizing our classrooms. Teachers are coming in and clearing out things. We're removing things from classrooms to make as much room as we can for desks and space in order to keep kids apart, keep people apart, and also to make it easy, 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 and quick to clean. Additionally, we're planning on utilizing the outside as much as we can. So our custodians are increasing the classroom cleaning and school-wide protocols. We have hand-washing stations going throughout the schools. We have washing equipment going into the classroom. Our custodians have backpacks with spray misters to get in, you know, quickly and disinfect and again, try to keep things as clean as possible. The PK through eight students will be set up to remain in stable pods. And in other words, they will try, we will try as much as we can to remain with the same group of students all day long. Yes, they're going to mix and match on the bus coming in. Yes, they'll mix and match on a carpool coming in. Yes, you know, in after-school activity. And a number of people have brought up that, well, you know, stable pods won't stop the spread of virus. No, it won't. But the purpose of the stable pods from the standpoint of the Department of Health is to, if there's an outbreak in a classroom, it means the classroom then switches to quarantine and distance learning, not the entire school. So the stable pods are basically kept as a, oh, this is a terrible analogy. I was going to say bulkheads on a submarine so the whole sub doesn't sink. You could just block off chambers. That's an awful analogy, but you get the idea. It's to try to minimize the spread and minimize what, if anything, needs to be shut down.
May I ask a question?
Yes, please.
I'm a parent of a second grader and a child going to sixth grade. With the busing going, you know, the busing being, however it works, but then you have students in different pods, how will quarantining or how will we know? That's going to be a large amount of children that are going to be quarantined if somebody gets sick because now you have their siblings. So if I have one in the middle school, one in the elementary school, the bus, the children on the bus, the children on the other bus. So I just didn't, I'm just putting that out there as a thought in my head. I'm sorry.
Oh, absolutely. And that's also a question we had asked. And the response to this is, on the bus will be assigned seats. And so if a student is, and this is also to help the Department of Health do contact tracing, so that if there, if somebody has it, they can identify what classroom they're in, what students they're interacting with. If they have it and they're riding on the bus, they would be able to identify the students that are sitting in front of or behind them. Likewise, we would need to have stable groups for those who are doing ride shares. And so if you're getting a ride to school and a mom from a neighborhood is picking up three or four kids every morning, yes, we can't, you know, you can't do social distancing in your minivan unless it's a massive minivan. But if there is, somebody is infected, you know, it is those kids in that ride share that would be contacted. Additionally, on the buses, the guidance is that, and we understand the difficulty with after-school care, that you have to ride the same bus in the afternoon as you do in the morning. So you won't be able to just, oh, I'm going to go stay over at so-and-so's house after school. So instead of taking bus eight home, I'm going to take bus 12. So again, it's going to be, we're going to have to track how students are getting to and from school, where they're sitting, and who they're sitting next to. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So outdoor space, stable pods, and again, because of the students who have to be in stable pods, we are definitely going to increase the frequency of breaks and get them outside, get them running around.
Superintendent?
Yes, please.
Hi, I'm sorry to interrupt. Just two things I want to point out. One is, there's a couple of folks in the chat who have the raised-hand function.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. It's myself included. That's why, that's why I noticed it. The other thing is, so in terms of continuity with the buses, how is that going to work with, and you might not have the answer to this, but I'm just curious as I've been listening. How's that going to work with bus monitors and bus drivers? Are they going to be assigned to specific buses every day? Or is there going to be an opportunity for bus drivers to rotate, which then creates the obvious problems?
So the bus, the drivers will be assigned a bus every day. One of the guidances is also to increase the amount of bus monitors on a bus so that, to help kids to make sure that, you know, they're sitting where they need, where, you know, to help them load and unload and, you know, and to help with the tracking. Again, I don't want to put a price on student safety and minimizing risk. However, that's an unbudgeted item that we're trying to work out the best, the best way that we could handle that. Additionally, the majority of our bus monitors are retired folk who are high-risk on their own. And so, you know, so again, it's another hurdle that we have to overcome.
So, and would these be the same, let's say theoretically, would these be the same bus monitors on the same bus every day?
Ideally, again, just to try to keep the pods as stable as we want.
Yeah, because I mean, I worry and, you know.
Of course.
And I mean, I'm a high-risk individual myself because of my kidneys. So, you know, I hear this and I understand all the different things that go into it. But on a bus with, you know, children who may not want to stay in their seat, they're trying to sit with friends, they're going back and forth on the bus monitors, trying to navigate all of that. You know, I just, it's a bad situation anyway, but I just wanted to see if there was going to be the same bus monitors on the same buses. So thank you for answering that.
Yeah, and we're talking about having a hand-washing station as students get on and off the bus. We've been talking with the bus company about the protective gear that the drivers will be wearing. Again, we are going to strongly require, and again, if it's challenged and based on the CDC guidance, I don't know. We're just, we're going to require that masks be worn on the bus, you know, just like with at dismissal and passing in a hallway. Again, it really comes down to the rules and regulations, Department of Health, and the state government as to what degree masks will be required. Chairman Lombardi, I mean, because Mr. Jones pointed out, some folks have their hands up. Can we, are you okay? Can we, are you okay if we call on a couple of people?
I'm okay. I just want to want everybody to understand this isn't a public hearing. It's, it's a presentation. We can have a public hearing in the future. These things will evolve and ultimately it'll basically probably be the Department of Health who will make the ultimate call as to what we will finally be doing. But these are just the plans that Ride requested you to submit, Superintendent, correct? Okay, so I, I, I'll open it up, but I just understand that, you know, this isn't a public hearing. We'll, we'll hear from some people. But again, this is just a presentation at this point. Nobody's made any decisions and we're not here to make decisions. It's not on the agenda for a vote or anything else. So you want me to go to Brian?
Yes, Brian?
Well, let's go to Alexandra Norton first, if she's available. Do you have to unmute him, Superintendent?
Hi, yes, I have a question regarding transportation and the busing. So as you are well aware, this is airborne. So I wanted to know, will the windows be opened on the buses?
You know, Alex, I would expect you to ask me a question that I have not heard before. So thank you very much.
Bingo.
We will, you know, I don't know that answer off the top of my head. That is something that I would have to take a look at and confer with the Department of Health and the bus company.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. I don't know, is Brian back on? All right, move on, Superintendent, keep going.
All right, so we've also have done, have started a number of mechanical upgrades to improve airflow and quality in our schools. Specifically, NSCS has about a 300, $350,000 HVAC upgrade happening in which that all of the unit vents in the classrooms are going to be upgraded. Filters are being changed throughout and the control systems are being updated to make the building vent air much more efficiently. And in this case, I can, I, I, the recommendation is to have as much airflow, open the windows and have as much ventilation as possible. So that's the guidance for indoor spaces to try to turn them into outdoor spaces as much as possible. Again, the question on the bus, I'd have to go back and, and find out. Additionally, at the middle school and the high school, Mr. Sepe has started changing all the filters in all of the, the ventilation systems and cleaning out and upgrading it all. I mean, this is yearly maintenance at the high school, middle school. At the elementary school, it's making up for a deficiency. Additionally, I've included a picture, the, the plexiglass panels have been, have begun to be installed in the, the front offices. And this is a picture today. This was just hung at the middle school. And Mr. Sepe is also looking at cutting and measuring and hanging plexiglass panel in front of teacher desks, starting mostly with the focus on the high school, because on the high school, we can't do stable pods the way scheduling is set up. But again, we're, we're looking at installing these throughout the, the buildings. Now, distance learning, there will be distance learning to some way, shape or form. One, there'll be distance learning due to illness. We have students who are, have underlying health conditions and it's not safe for them to return to school. We will set for them and we will provide a full distance education. All right, additionally, we're going to have students, possibly classes, who may have to be sent home due to quarantine, whether it's an individual student or a classroom of students. At which point we will have to very quickly pivot to distance learning at any given time for any individual or group of people. Now, this one is going to be a bit controversial. Under the full reopening plan, the plan is to, to, to return every day of the week. And yes, and we get it, we want to have our kids come back every day of the week. However, in our three plans, we're recommending Monday as a distance learning day. All right, and I understand that parents don't all get Mondays off and this will be difficult. And again, this is our recommendation at this point. This may not be the reality going forward. And the reason why we're looking at the Mondays is one, the new statewide calendar has, has allocated 10 distance learning days, which are professional days slash distance learning days. They all fall on Monday, along with the, the regular holidays that over the year, there are 15 Mondays where there's no classroom, that the schools are closed. So we're looking at having that Monday as that distance learning day. What that means is that that's the day all the schools will be deep cleaned, because the buildings will be empty. That's the day where kids who are on distance learning, small groups of kids, individual students, can get individualized attention from their teachers. What we're going to try to avoid is teaching a distance learning class with 20, 25 students in it. When we do distance learning under our various plans, we ideally would like to focus on small groups of students to give them individualized attention. So that Monday would be planning day personalized distance learning check time. And then, and again, keep in mind, this may change. This is current recommendation based on all the different things that we feel that, that are going to have to be balanced. Now, distance learning as a choice. So in the survey that went out of the 700, the, the 700, the responses for 700 students, the question was, if the Department of Ed allowed 100% distance learning, would you choose it instead of coming into school? And 33% said, yes, we would. Because again, there's the concern of coming into school. There's the concern of be, having to wear a mask. There's the concern of not having to wear a mask. There's, there, there's a concern that it's safer at home. So, so, so the question came, depending on the amount of student, families that would choose distance learning, could we create a distance learning academy to allow parents that choice? They can choose distance learning or they can choose to send their kids in, into the school. Ideally, we want to have the kids in school, but we understand the concerns. And to be quite honest, if some of our families didn't come in, if they were distance learning, that would also help to help on the buses and that would also help with social distancing within the school. So again, we're looking at things as a whole. Right now, the Department of Ed has not said whether or not distance learning by choice, a, a, a distance learning academy is permissible. However, not just us, but other districts, we're keeping it as a potential option moving forward, depending where we end up in August. Any questions on distance learning before I just actually go right through the different plans? Okay, Plan One, Full in Person. Rights definition, schools resume 100% operations with some distancing protocols required based on current health information. Distance learning is integrated with in-person programs and utilized as necessary. The model we're looking at under this would be all PK to 12. Monday is that distance learning day, which is for deep cleaning, planning and the individualized instruction for those who have to be on distance learning due to medical reasons. Tuesday and Friday are in-person instruction. Now, I put in some notes, some of the, some, some of the concerns would be providing sufficient bus, bus transportation. If seating is limited, as of this writing is an obstacle, as I mentioned in the previous slide. And Ride guidance for classroom desk spacing to maintain social distancing is three to six feet. What that means is that there will be minimal social distancing within classrooms. We have a classroom of 24, 22, 24, 28. They will be at three feet apart. And again, I'm not saying this is the plan we go with. Just, you know, may, we're just fulfilling the definitions that the Department of Ed gave us. Partial in person, okay? The definition here is elementary and transitional grades re-enter in person. So again, the focus is on elementary and a transitional grade, like ninth grade in the high school. We prioritize in-person re-entry for vulnerable subpopulations also. So our special ed students would be prioritized in coming back. All right, remaining groups begin with distance learning. Now, this is where we've, we question the guidance that comes with partial and limited in-person learning. They are recommending that you bring the elementaries in every day and the secondary students who are old enough to be left on their own alone can run full distance learning. We do not want any grade level in any plan to be on full distance learning. We believe, know that the students are better coming in at least a couple of days of week and doing a few days distance learning than spending the whole time distance learning. That's from a social emotional standpoint and an instructional standpoint. And if we can mitigate risks of COVID, that would be what we would like to have, we would like to do. However, in the partial plan, PK through four, and I put five in parentheses because our fifth grade is at the middle school. And again, models start changing. So it's possibly PK through four, possibly five. Monday is distance learning for all students. And then Tuesday through Friday is in-person instruction. And I should tell you that all the guidance is around K through five to get them in every day. We've worked it and worked the numbers and we, we also believe that six should be in, that six is on that cusp of, you know, being able to stay home alone versus they, they really should be in school, you know, in during the day. So again, this PK through four slash five, six is a, a critical area we're looking at. Under this model, five, six to 12, possibly five, the students intend on a hybrid schedule, meaning Monday is the distance learning day for all students. And then on Tuesday and Wednesday, half the students come in. And I just said right now, A through L, only, because I, I haven't gone through and I haven't divided the, the enrollment by, by alpha. So A through L, for example, would come in Tuesday and Wednesday and Thursday, Friday, they're on distance learning. M through Z would be on distance learning Tuesday and Wednesday and then coming to, coming in person on Thursday, Friday. So we have 50% of the school in at any given time. Students with different last names within a household can be part of the same cohort, because that ultimately, that question comes up. Now, the notes on this, Ride prioritized PK through five elementary schools for in-person. They do allow hybrid for like this AB cohort at the higher grade level. So this is, this is one of Ride models that they, they accept. The hybrid model allows for six feet of in, in-class social distancing for all secondary grade levels. However, in this model here, our elementaries are at three feet per, apart. And also in this model, the bus transportation to and from NSCS and possibly grade five is limited, six, but the secondaries were, were, were much better off with bus capacity. And then Plan Number Three, Limited, is basically Plan Number Two, but it's K to 12 is the hybrid model. So it's Monday distance learning day. And then Tuesday, Wednesday, half are in person, Thursday, Friday, the other half's in person. And the, the benefit of this is that all students get to come to school. We don't relegate any grade levels to 100% distance learning, that we can maintain social distancing in the classrooms. We can spread our desks six feet apart. And also we can handle lunches in the cafeteria and in other spaces, because different pods have to be 14 feet apart of each other. So we can, so we can manage lunch, we can manage transportation, we can manage social distancing for all students. So again, none of these plans may be viable. We may be told we have to run Plan Three. We don't know at this stage. But what we did, we, we, we submitted the plans to the Department of Ed. We followed their guidelines. We tried very hard to balance the instructional needs of our students. The full plan that we submitted has a lot of work around curriculum and instruction. It has so much more detail. The Department of Ed is reviewing all of our plans. They are providing feedback. We will continue with community forums. We will continue to meet with the Department of Health and the Department of Education. The Governor's Office will be reviewing all of this. And, you know, our recommendation from the, to the Department of Health and the Governor's Office is to, if at all possible, make a full on decision how this is going to be, how this is going to look sooner than later, because we need to plan, our families need to plan. There's a lot of work that needs to be done and ideally, we're all on the same page. Likewise, when the question about how do you, you know, this, this, would you do 100% distance learning if it was offered to you? That was a snapshot in time. Had I asked that question at the beginning of summer, there would have been a different response. If I asked that question in two weeks, there will be a different response. So what we, we're all urging is that, you know, we do have forums coming up. We're still getting feedback from the staff. We're still making, and parents, we're still making our plans. We're still revising. We're still talking with the Department of Ed, with the Department of Health, so that when something is decided upon, hopefully sooner than later, we will be able to act, act decisively and everybody will be able to make plans accordingly. So thank you. I hope I didn't create more questions than I answered. I'm afraid I did. But we're in this together and we're, we're going to figure this out. So thank you.
So Superintendent, in the future, you're going to come in with a different plan, I'm going to say. That's going to be approved by Ride and Department of Health. And then that's where hopefully you have every question answered, which I'm sure will be impossible. But I would expect that to be coming down the pipe. Is that correct?
Correct, and whatever plan will work absolutely the same for everybody. So no, it won't. We're, I, you know, it, again, I go back to the, to our subcommittees as we're meeting and discussing all of this. And I kept trying to tell them, because all these questions kept coming up. And I kept trying to say, look, I'm not worried about you guys. I'm not worried about the teachers. I'm not worried about the staff. I know the students can do it. We have a supportive community. My concern is about the Department of Ed, the state and Department of Health to get these decisions in on time so that we can get everything in place accordingly. I have complete confidence in the district of what we're going to be able to do. I just wish we had the answer and I can tell you, you know, 100%, this is what we're doing and, you know, we're, we're going to make it work. We'll make it work. I just don't quite know exactly what we're doing yet, but that will, that will be revealed.
Thank you, Superintendent. I see that Brian is back online. Brian, did you have a question? Brian? You're on mute. Can you unmute yourself? Did you have a question?
Nope, I think Brian's iPad is, is, is going to be silent.
Okay. I see, Vivian?
Yes, hi. I had a question about the face coverings. It seems like there's, you know, a lot of disagreement there on parents, you know, wanting their child to wear face coverings. Would it be possible to try to group children as much as possible into groups that do want to wear face coverings versus those who do not want to wear face coverings? I don't. I don't know if that's too much of an administrative burden, but seems like it, it might help some of the tension there.
It, it's a possibility. However, I can, I can guarantee you that some of the tension will become, come from whatever teacher is in that classroom.
Okay, I know, I'm sure there's disagreement amongst your teachers as well.
I haven't heard any yet. So, there may be.
Okay, thank you.
And I will add, Vivian, I will add, and there is a question on face coverings, the younger you go. So, yes, you know, so there, there are some places that the question has, well, instead of the face coverings, how about face shields? And we've looked at face shields with cute frogs and tigers on the, the headpiece with the face shield below that. And again, things like that remain a possibility, but we're, we're going to have to follow whatever the, the Governor and the Department of Health and the CDC recommends.
Understood. Thank you.
Colonel?
More of a comment or just a statement maybe for us to do? One of the, I applaud the Superintendent's presentation, I thought it was really well done. The only, my biggest concern for me, though, is I keep, really what the Superintendent just said, you have to wait there from the CDC, the Department of Health and the Governor says. I think my biggest concern is that there aren't enough voices from teachers, the teachers, the parents, the schools at that decision-making table. You know, I, it just, it just still sounds to me like it's a lot of top-down discussion, like it's coming down from the top. And the people here who are in the trenches who know what's going on are trying to send information up, and we don't know if the information is being received or not. And I don't mean that to be, I'm not challenged of being disrespectful to the administration, because it's a difficult situation. But I do think we need to get more, we need to get more people at the table. Unless the Superintendent has, I don't want to put him on the spot, I'm just, I'm, I don't know how other people feel, but that's just my feeling on it, that it's too top-down, there's not enough people who are in the trenches at the decision-making table. We're, like, we're waiting to hear from them what it's going to be. I think more parents and teachers and, and I, I don't know what the solution is, maybe to get, say, we, we want to have more members in the executive decision-making board who's doing this. Maybe beyond that 10, but I don't know, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I, I know the folks from the Department of Ed and the Governor's Office have been on the Superintendent calls, not all of them, quite a few of them. So, and, and there are committees that are looking at this, that are made up of representatives of, of, of both of the teacher unions, Superintendent's Organization, the Principal's Organization, I believe, we have some folks from, some nurses on there, Department of Health, the Governor's Office. So there, there is a committee in Department of Ed that is looking and reviewing these plans. So, I, I don't have any other information than that, so.
I, I heard that that, that committee exists, I don't know, I tried to find some information about it, like, I can't find anything about it. I've heard it exists, but I don't know, I think, the shadow committee.
There you go.
I don't know that, I shouldn't say that. I don't know, I haven't heard, I don't know what it is. I've tried to find out, like, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Superintendent, is there some way that we could put on our website, like a portal to, you know, here, I, I know that you already did an interview, but, but here, people's ideas and questions, some type of portal to, to accept the information? I was going to say they can email you, but I don't want.
Oh, sure, why not?
But I mean, a more centralized place where, you know, like Alexandra Norton just said, well, the, the bus, the window's going to be open on the bus, so that we know, down the road, we need to address that question at some point.
Yeah, actually, I did create a webpage for school reopening, where I've been gathering documents and information, but it's, that's a great idea. I'll put a section in there for just general Q and A. And that will give us a, a good way to communicate this information out. And also, to consider things that we haven't thought of yet. So, that's good, I can do that.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up. Obviously, we will be doing further presentations in the future. No decisions have been made. The school committee has not voted on anything, and is not probably going to vote until close to the school year, unfortunately, when we have better guidance.
Mr. Chair, could I just ask a question?
Absolutely.
Superintendent, the forums that you have planned for Thursday, are those going to be more like a public hearing where people can ask questions and get answers, or is this going to be a presentation such as tonight?
No, I'm, I'm not anticipating a presentation. I'm just picturing more of a dialogue and discussion.
Okay.
So, so, so the slide deck that I put together, I'm going to have up on the website, and tomorrow or tonight, before I go to sleep, everyone's going to get an email with a summary of everything that we just went over. And so they'll have that, they'll have time to form in. And for the, the, the parents, I'm, I'm going to add, similar to what Mr. Lombardi just said, Chair Lombardi, is to just add a quick survey, if you have questions for the, you know, that sort of town hall meeting, just, just post it in there, and we'll, we'll try to go through as many as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent. Does any committee members have any questions or comments? Great, thank you. Thank you Superintendent.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the informational part of the, the meeting. So there is a list of personnel appointments, resignations and leaves of absences. This is for informational purposes. This superintendent has authority to do this without us, and this is just the listing. Anybody have any questions for the Superintendent? Okay, we'll move on to old business, the fiscal year 20, operating capital budgets. Lisa, do you have anything on this?
Nothing to report on FY '20.
Okay, we've closed it out, we're pretty much done with it?
We're working on it now.
Okay. And in regards to the fiscal year 21, operating capital budgets, we know our numbers, or at least we think we know our numbers at this point. You've made some adjustments to, adjustments to tie into the town council's appropriation?
Yes, I would ask that you would adopt the budget as presented?
As amended.
Correct.
Anybody have any questions in regards to the 21 operating capital budgets? Did you need any vote on the 20 operating capital budgets, Lisa, before we?
Not the 20, the 21.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2000, fiscal year 21, operating capital budgets as amended, reflected in your package.
To move.
Is that okay, Lisa, that?
Yes.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. I think we need to roll call this.
Chair Lombardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheres?
Yes.
Mr. Canal?
Yes.
Mrs. Johannes?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Vada?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. We'll move on to new business, Superintendent, teacher recalls.
I provided you with four names to recall.
Does anybody have any questions?
I'm, I'm just assuming this is not a final list.
Correct.
No, no, this, this is the list we can, we can do right now. We're, we're still honestly waiting for word from the General Assembly as to state aid to education, and if we're going to be incurring any reductions. We truly appreciate the town putting aside funds in, in contingency. However, that comes at the cost of cuts across all the other departments, and so we just want to be very sure of state aid to education before we go any further. Additionally, many of these COVID-related pieces that we talked about also have some extreme expenses behind them. And so, again, as our, our reopening plans are solidified, we will have a better sense of what our own expenses are.
Further questions? I'll entertain a motion to accept the teacher recalls as presented in the package.
So moved.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there any further business?
I would just like to tell Lisa that you and your department have done a wonderful job making the budget work for us. So, thank you very much, because it's not easy to make those cuts.
Thank you, Jean.
And Jean, she has to hear it from the chairman too, all the time, too, so that ain't tough. End times harder.
Yes, I do.
I have to say, his comments aren't usually the most complimentary. They're a, this, why can't this be done, you know, or explain this, so.
They're not, not complimentary, they just put Lisa on edge a little bit sometimes.
Yes, that's right.
Talking about spending and going, you know, going.
But you're very supportive.
Yes, thank you. Anything else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion's been made, and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, we're adjourned. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you for everybody who attended from the public, staff.